AJ, you want to just come up? He didn't want any big introduction. I'll just say on his way up that we are thrilled that we could bring Mr. Crable in. He is a national expert. You have a complimentary copy of his book there. And AJ, if you would.
Thank you. There's a Hungarian physicist a few hundred years ago. And he became responsible as the chief administrator for a hospital in Vienna. And as he was going through the data, he really fancied himself to be a scientist, physician of his day. He really wanted to dig into the data and understand what was going on behind it as a way of trying to figure out how do we increase the outcomes of the patients that we serve. One of the things he notices as he's digging through the data is that he's got two different wards in his hospital that are serving expectant mothers. One ward that is attended to by physicians and another that is attended to by midwives. And as he's looking at these two different wards, both of them catching babies every day, he notices that there is a stark difference in the likelihood of mortality among the mothers in these two different wards. That as he looks at the data, the ward that is attended to by nurse, by midwives, those moms seem to have much better health outcomes than the ward that is attended to by physicians. This completely complex, he's confounded by it, trying to understand what could be going on. But he does what any good scientist would do in the moment, as he begins analyzing data and trying to isolate variables. And so he notices that in the midwives ward, that often they'll have priests come through. And he thinks, well, you know, maybe what's happening is that there's a sense of faith that's happening in the women in this ward. And because they feel rejuvenated by their faith in God, that that is causing them to be more healthy. And so the logical experiment then is, he starts bringing priests into the physician ward as well. And there's no change of the data. And he does all these different things. He's trying to isolate what could be the difference. He's completely confounded. He doesn't figure it out. One day unfortunately, one of his colleagues gets sick and passes away. And the thing he notices about his colleague's symptoms when he died were they were the exact same symptoms as the symptoms of the moms who've been dying in the physician's ward. What on earth could be causing a older gentleman to die of the exact same phenomenon that's killing pregnant moms? He starts to look at it and he notices something that he missed in all of his previous investigation. That the physicians, before they rotate into the maternity ward, spend time with cadavers, learning more about biology and pulling them apart. Whereas the midwives don't spend any time with cadavers. He noticed that his friend has spent a lot of time working with cadavers. And then he starts to put together this theory that maybe what's happened is, there's some type of particles that have transmitted from the cadavers to his friend, from the cadavers via the hands of the physicians to the mothers. And that could be causing it. Now, this is long before Louis Pasteur and the understanding that we have now germs. But this is one of the very first times that we have recorded that somebody began to understand what we now take for granted, is basic sanitation that is standard practice in every hospital. So what he does is he puts together a process by which all of the physicians, before they switch from working with cadavers to working with moms, that they wash their hands and he has a solution to help sterilize. And he comes up with this whole process and they go through it. And amazingly, the mortality rate of mothers declines and it starts to look much more normalized with the rate of survivability that's happening in the ward with midwives. To confirm this further, he says, okay, well, let's, then let's expand this practice. And so he start requiring hand washing throughout the hospital, even between transitions from patient to patient, not just from patient, from cadaver to patient. And he sees this further reduction. He has landed on something that is an obvious, obvious solution, that is making a clear and tangible difference in the lives of his patients. And so what he naturally does, he gets excited. He goes to share it with other physicians across the land, say, hey, this is what we should all be doing. And he guesses how the physicians responded? Yeah, they were not interested in this at all. In fact, in most tellings, he was very aggressively shunned by the practitioners of the day. Why do you think that the doctors were so opposed to this idea? Y'all are nailing it. There's this complex interweave of circumstances that has nothing whatsoever to do with the well-being of moms. And everything to do with the livelihood of doctors, everything to do with the ego of doctors, everything to do with, I don't want to change my behavior. Like, it can't possibly be that what I've been doing is actually killing the very people that I'm sworn to protect. I can either accept that and change, or I can reject that and continue on the path that I've been on. And what they by and large chose to do at that time is to reject it. If Semmelweis was here today, he might say that patient outcomes don't change until doctor behaviors change. That if we want something powerful to happen in the lives of our patients, that that becomes available through a willingness of doctors to analyze and change our doctoral behaviors. And in the same way that he would offer that suggestion, this is the conversation that I offer you today. The student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. I want to do a couple of things. First, I want to talk through a little bit about what this means. I want to unpack this a little bit. What do we talk about when we say student outcomes? What do we mean when we talk about adult behavior change? And then after we go through that, I want to just open the floor up for dialogue, whatever questions you have, to what can we discuss that will help you bring this back into your sphere of influence? To do this, you're going to need a piece of paper to write with, write on, and pen to write with. There's a page that's in front of you that says something about a keynote handout. It's blank on the back. That'll probably be a good thing for you to use. I'd flip it over to the backside. You're going to need that in a moment ahead. So I got in pretty late last night. And so I was kind of jammed up in airport much of last night and last evening. I didn't actually get here into the hotel until after 11:30. And so I hadn't had a meal. So I showed up here and I was absolutely famished. In the moment when I'm hungry, what was the outcome that I wanted last night? Maybe it was food? Last night I got here, I was absolutely famished. I was hungry. What was the, what was the outcome that I wanted?
Feel full.
Feel full. The out, why is it that having food was not the outcome that I wanted?
To eat.
Maybe it requires being cooked and I'm tired. I don't want to have to deal with trying to cook it. Why is having food not the out? By the way, I'm going to be, this is going to be a conversation the whole time, folks, get used to it. This is what it's going to be like. Why is having food not the outcome that I wanted?
Well, obviously, because I'm tired of eating.
Oh, certainly, but I'm still hungry. I do actually want to feel full. So why is simply having food not the outcome that I want?
The outcome I want is to feel full, to experience satiation.
Why is having food not the outcome that I want?
To feel full.
Just because I have food doesn't mean it's in my mouth. Okay, certainly. And so just having food doesn't mean that I now feel full. Like, I can see a plate full of food, that doesn't magically make me feel full. Got it. Why is having food not the outcome that I want?
You were frustrated with the process.
Well, I was certainly frustrated with the process. I would have liked to eat even sooner. But even if I now had food, why is that not the outcome that I want? What's the outcome that I want?
To stop eating.
I want to feel full. I want to experience satiation. That's the outcome I want. Why is food not the outcome that I want? It's a potential solution, but I could have food and maybe it's food that I'm allergic to. That, now, that's not going to help me much. Why is, so maybe, maybe it's about having food that I'm not allergic to. Maybe it's, maybe it's about having, why is having my favorite meal not the outcome that I want?
To eat.
Sure, okay. Now, I asked the people at the front desk, bring me my favorite meal. Now I have my favorite meal in front of me. Why is that not the outcome that I want? It's still not in my stomach. Just because I have the presence of that particular meal doesn't mean that I now magically feel full. Why is having money to buy my favorite meal not the outcome that I want?
Still not full.
Still not full. Having money doesn't taste great. It's not actually the same thing as feeling full. Why is going to my favorite restaurant not the outcome that I want? Still not full. It's still not the, it's still not the end result. All of these are strategies. All of these are inputs designed to get me closer to the outcome that I want. But they're not the outcome that I want. There is a difference between inputs. These are the strategies, these are the resources knowable at the beginning of the cycle. And they're important, but the inputs are not the outcomes. There's the inputs, the food, you know, the money to buy food, going to the restaurant that has the ideal food. All of these are inputs into the process, but they're not the result that I want. Only feeling full at the end of the cycle is the result that I want. Why is it absolutely essential that school board members can tell the difference between inputs and outcomes? Why is it absolutely essential that school board members can tell the difference between inputs and outcomes? Why does this matter?
Effectively.
Say what?
They're not effective.
Which one of these tells us whether or not the school system's been effective?
The outcomes.
Only the outcomes can do that. Only the outcomes can do that. And if you can't tell the difference between an input and an outcome, then somebody could show up with a plate of food and said, congratulations, we have reached the outcome. And they may believe that, and they're probably not mal-intended, but you are deceived nevertheless. You have to be able to distinguish between inputs and outcomes. Who else? Why is it important that a school board be able to tell the difference between inputs, the resources and strategies knowable at the beginning of the cycle versus the outcomes, the measure of results knowable at the end of the cycle? Why is it absolutely essential that school board members can tell the difference between inputs and outcomes? Yeah?
Because you have to get from that point to that part. And that's where your behaviors and that something is to get to transition that into that.
Yeah, we have to start somewhere. And we'll start with the inputs at the beginning of the cycle. But the only measure of whether or not these were actually the inputs that we actually needed is what? Did we actually get the outcome we want at the end of the cycle? You got to be clear about this. No amount of knowledge about the inputs will ever reveal whether or not you're going to have the outcomes you want. Only the data about the outcomes can demonstrate. We can, if I know that my favorite food is a peanut butter jelly sandwich, I could have all the right peanut butter, let me get that organic peanuts, you know, whole grain bread, you know, crustless, you know, organic jam, you know, from the, you know, farmer's market down the street. I could have all of the right inputs. Does that tell me that I'll be full at the end of the cycle? No. It just means I've got great inputs. And I'm not saying don't have great inputs. I'm saying don't ever believe that great inputs is a proxy for knowing whether or not we have great outcomes. The board that focuses all of its time on the adult inputs to the exclusion of focusing any time on the student outcomes, is the board that's setting its students up to fail. And this, this is where we find ourselves as a nation, at a crossroads, where there is this persistent obsession and focus on the adult inputs and almost no attention to, are we actually producing the outcomes that we want for our students? And students are suffering by this lack of attention. And it's not because we have bad people who are out here trying to be malicious, but they are deceived into believing that they're focusing on student outcomes when they're not, when they're focusing on the adult inputs. The first step in this is you have to be able to distinguish between the two. You know, are we talking about adult inputs? Or are we talking about student outcomes? Now, you made a point earlier that there's, there's something in the middle though, and so we've got to attend to that. So if the inputs are knowable at the beginning of the cycle, and these are the resources, these are the, these are the resources that we've got, the strategies that we've got that we're applying. And the outcomes are knowable at the end of the cycle. These are the measures of the results. There's also data that's knowable in the midst of the cycle, in between the inputs and the outcomes. They give us some insight into, are we on track or not? We refer to these metrics in the middle of the cycle that give us some sense of how are we deploying the inputs and are we on track to the outcomes? We refer to these metrics in the middle as outputs. Inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Inputs are the resources, strategies knowable at the beginning of the cycle. Outputs are the metrics knowable in the midst of the cycle. And outcomes are the impact knowable at the end of the cycle. Inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Let's break this down in terms of schools. What are some examples of inputs in a school system? Money is an input? Policies are an input?
Curriculum.
Curriculum is an input. Your single most important input in a school system is?
Teachers.
Teachers. The single most important input in every school system everywhere. Teachers. This is the single most important input. If you get every other input wrong, but you have teachers who can deliver a high quality of instruction to your students all day, every day, your students are probably going to be all right. If you get that input wrong and you get every other input perfect, your children will still suffer. The single most important input that the school system controls is the quality of instruction that students experience on a daily basis. And the largest variable in that is the effectiveness of your teachers. Single most important input in a school system. Other inputs in a school system? Tons of them.
Principals.
Principals, admin, your discipline manual, your policies, buses, books, facilities, computers, all of it. Almost everything tangible that you can think of are the inputs. They're the resources, the activities that are vested at the beginning of the cycle. Before students ever show up, these are the things that we have available. And these are the inputs that we're applying in hopes of eventually getting to the outcomes we intend. So what I said is, what are the inputs that a school system can control? And I would definitely take parents off that list. An important variable, to be certain, but just not one that I would describe as being under the control of the school system.
Buildings.
Buildings, facilities, absolutely. It's a huge part of the inputs, the resources that are applied that are knowable at the beginning of the cycle. What are examples of outputs in a school system?
Discipline.
Yeah, so we can look throughout the school year. We could see how many times the little AJ, you know, get himself in trouble and violate one of our rules and we had to go through whatever our process is. And the, the data that describes in the middle of the school year, how many of our little AJs, you know, did whatever they did, that would be output data. It's data knowable in the midst of the cycle. It gives us some insight into what's going on with our inputs and probably some insight into, are we likely to get the outcomes we want? Well, other examples of outputs in a school system?
You got to be that.
What type of assessment?
Formative.
So your formative assessment is definitely output data. So this is the type of assessments that teachers would use to figure out, how well did students retain what I taught this week? And so if you think about that, kind of the quiz at the end of the week, what's really going on is the teacher's trying to figure out, all right, I laid out this instruction, how much of it did they actually retain? And that's going to give me some insights into, do I need to reteach or not? That would be a formative assessment, as distinct from diagnostic assessment, or interim assessment, or summative. I would consider most formative and interim assessments to be output measures, because they're generally knowable in the midst of the cycle. I generally put diagnostic assessment a little bit closer to the inputs, because the intention of diagnostic assessment is to have a sense of what's happening before instruction starts. But then you have summative assessment, that's at the end of instruction, and so I'd put that into outcomes. Other examples of outputs in a school system? Yeah. Attendance? Attendance, absolutely. How often do we check attendance? This is not a trick question. How often do we check attendance?
Every day.
How often do we check attendance?
Every day.
Yeah, every day. This is definitely output data. It's data that's knowable constantly throughout the school year and gives us some sense of what's going on. Output data is absolutely essential. It gives us some sense of what is the quality of implementation of the inputs, and some sense of, are we on track to the outcomes? But as valuable as it is, it's not outcome data. What's an example of outcome data in a school system? So standardized testing could be an example, depending on if it's of a summative nature at the end of the school system. There is standardized assessment that happens throughout the school year. I'd consider that output data, not outcome data.
Post-secondary success.
Post-secondary success. Yeah, we might say that at the, after the end of our K-12 cycle, how are they doing after they leave us? And that could be an outcome measure for the school system. I know school systems that have adopted that. They've set goals and say, we will measure our effectiveness as a school system based on how they do once they've left us. That is a very different standard for which a school system might hold itself. Other examples of outcomes?
Lifetime earnings.
Lifetime earnings. Now, we really want to look further down the road. Yeah.
Graduation rates.
Could be. Graduation rates could be an outcome. If we've defined the end of the cycle to be whether or not little AJ walked across that stage, then graduation rate would be our outcome. Other examples of outcomes in a school system?
If we're like that.
Yeah, if we have some type of measure of workforce readiness, some type of measure that gives us some insight into, are they ready for whatever comes next? Maybe we look at the percentage of students who graduate having earned an industry certification of some sort. That that might be the outcome that, to which we aspire. But all these are examples of outcome, potentially examples of outcome measures. Measures knowable at the end of the cycle that tell us, what is the result that we got? There are inputs, there are outputs, and there are outcomes. Inputs, outputs, outcomes. But school systems only exist for one reason. Do school systems exist for inputs?
Exist for the outcomes.
No, they absolutely do not exist for the inputs.
They exist for by jobs.
No, no.
Yeah.
This is a challenge. This is a challenge, is we have to get clear, why do school systems exist? Do they exist for the inputs?
Not the tests.
I would hope not. Or I would say, if that is where you stand, I would like for you not to be my child's board member. Do the school systems exist for the outputs? The reason school systems exist, the only reason school systems exist, is to improve student outcomes, to cause improvements in what students know and are able to do.
The only reason.
It's the, it is the only reason they exist. Anything that is outside of that is inconsistent with why we have public schools. Now, is it possible that folks have lost their way? Most certainly. That is why you are here today, to be the folks who will bring people, you know, back to that which is the core intention of public education in the first place. To cause improvements in student outcomes, to cause improvements in what students know and are able to do. Since they can live choice-filled lives, that they can take care of themselves, their families, their communities, that they can have a sense of agency and freedom on their own terms. That if we fail children and we don't leave them with the outcomes necessary for them to live into their own possibility, then as public schools, we have failed. And it's not useful to tiptoe around it. It's not useful to try to pretend that that's not the case, that that is in fact the case. The only reason school systems exist is to improve student outcomes. Let's go to this piece of paper you got. Go ahead and draw three columns for me. Guess what you're going to label those three columns?
Inputs, outputs, and outcomes.
Yeah. Go ahead and draw three columns on your piece of paper. I generally find it's helpful to do it landscape instead of portrait, but it doesn't matter. It's kind of your own thing. Inputs, outputs, and outcomes. Here's what I want you to do. I want you to think of your most recent school board meeting. I want you to think of your most recent school board meeting. I want you to think of how long that meeting lasted. Did it last 60 minutes, 90 minutes, 30 minutes, you know, four hours, five hours, eight hours? Pick your poison. Think of your most recent school board meeting. Get in mind how long it lasted. And then, once you've got that number in place, now try to identify what percentage of that meeting was focused on inputs? What percentage of that meeting was focused on outputs? What percentage of that meeting was focused on outcomes? Pro tip, those three numbers added together should equal 100. So go ahead and write down on your paper, think of the most recent school board meeting, your board meeting. If you're not a board member, then a board meeting that you've watched, this works whether you're a local board member or a state school board member, doesn't matter. Same rigor applies, the same intention applies, that we're here to improve student outcomes. And so the first question we ask ourselves is, how are we using the time that we've been given? Are we focused on inputs? Are we focused on outputs? Are we focused on outcomes? What percentage of the meeting was focused on inputs? What percentage of the meeting was focused on outputs? What percentage of the meeting was focused on outcomes? Those three numbers added together should give you 100. How are we spending the minutes we've been given? I like it, people pulling out cell phones. What do, what do we do at this meeting? I have no recollection. What percentage of the time was focused on inputs? What percentage of the time was focused on outputs? What percentage of the time was focused on outcomes?
He and I were at the same school with you.
And have very different answers.
Although, different months. Same school.
Oh, different months?
So one month was one way, and other month was the other.
All right, well, that's okay. We'll talk about that. Ultimately, when you do this, outside of this conversation, well, generally encourage the board to do is to think about this over the course of a 12-month period, because you certainly do have cycles. But for right now, just for practice, for this practice round, we're just going to look at whatever the one month that you most recently had. All right, so let's popcorn this out. I'm not actually interested in the inputs or outputs. Surprise, surprise. I'm interested, what percentage of the time did you write down for outcomes? Just talk to me. What you got?
Zero.
Zero, zero, 20, zero. Is that one? I have the big spender back there, big spender, 1%. What do you got over here? Any percentages?
I have 15.
15? Five?
I have 40. I have data of 2.
Forty, oh, don't worry, we'll come to that. We'll come to that.
I think five.
Maybe, maybe five?
On outcomes.
Yeah. Inputs, outputs, and outcomes. All right, so we've got everywhere from 0% up to, I think we've got the big roller in the back with 40% here, 45%. Give me some examples. What is it that you were talking about that sounds like it was a focus on outcomes? On the results at the end of the cycle, whether the inputs or outputs? What are some of the things you were talking about that you put down as time spent on outcomes? Yeah?
Our school board has a principal coming in from each school, and I like them following in the school. And then one year ago, we're discussing data and how we're looking.
Gotcha.
And then discuss the needs.
Okay.
The important part of that, though, that our superintendent has made clear to the principals is they need to keep it to 10 minutes. You know, three hours.
Got it, got it. What, for those of you who have any amount of your time focused on outcomes, what took place during that period of time that you said was focused on outcomes? Let's get some other examples. Yeah?
We spent quite a bit of time in executive discussion, talking about the kids who don't meet our specific school district standards, but can we accept that they can just meet the state standards in 21 hours instead of 24? We had a list of students, what kind of problems they had, what the interventions were. Do we think that they can get up to the 21 hours by graduation? And so we spent about 35 minutes in executive, and that was our primary thing, discussing the students who were not achieving, how could we use what we have to try to get them to make the state standards, even though it's not school standards, and let them graduate.
Gotcha, thank you. Yeah, what'd you, y'all spend time on?
The new graduation requirements that will kick off for the class of 2028 next fall. And also, open enrollment, we spent a lot of time on that. That kind of stuff is maybe all real, but that's new in Kansas, and the open enrollment, how it will affect that sort of.
Gotcha. There's inputs, there's outputs, and then there's outcomes. But I didn't say that school systems exist to improve outcomes, did I? Said school systems exist for one reason and one reason only. That's to cause improvements in student outcomes. What's, what's an example of an outcome that the school system creates that's not a student outcome?
You say that's an example.
Yeah. What's an example of an outcome that a school system creates that is not a student outcome? What's an example of a result at the end of the cycle that is not a measure of what students know and are able to do? What's an example of an outcome that a school system creates that is not a student outcome? Yeah, so facilities. So maybe we were doing a construction project and you're saying at the end of the year, the construction project is complete and that is a, and that is not a student outcome. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Got it. Well, so let's push on that a little bit. If we don't have the large, pretty building that is effective at doing what a building's supposed to do, you know, keep out the rain and such. If we don't have that, then students won't have as great of a place to learn. And so then it might be harder for them to learn. And so maybe they won't learn as much. So wouldn't that make big, pretty buildings a student outcome? It always annoys me when I fail to trick people in public. It's absolutely not a student outcome. To your point, it absolutely contributes to student outcomes, but it is not in itself a student outcome. Attendance at football games. At the end of the year, we can look at what was the attendance, what was the student attendance, what was the parent attendance, what was the staff attendance? What was the board member attendance at the football games? We could look at that at the end of the year. That, that might be outcome data. All right. You're saying that's not a student outcome? But, but wait a minute. If people don't come out and support the team, then there'll be less school spirit. And if there's less school spirit, maybe kids will be taking less pride in their work. And then maybe they'll be less likely to do as well. So wouldn't that make it a student outcome? Yeah. It's absolutely not. It's absolutely not a student outcome. It's, it's, it's not that I'm saying it's unimportant. It's just not a measure of what our students know and are able to do. And that's the distinction between student outcomes and adult outcomes. Is it student outcomes are a measure of what our students know or are able to do at the end of the cycle? And adult outcomes are basically everything else. That your student outcomes are a measure of what students know and are able to do at the end of the cycle. And the adult outcomes are basically the outcomes that aren't student outcomes. And there are so many adult outcomes that school systems create, and it's not the suggestion that they don't matter. What are other examples of adult outcomes in a school system? Yeah?
Technology.
Technology. That we have effective technology. At the end of the year, we can, you know, do a tech audit. We can figure out that we have the right technology or not. Maybe that's a, maybe that's an outcome. But isn't, but if we have all the right technologies, does that tell us what students know and are able to do? No, absolutely not. And so it's not that adult outcomes are unimportant. It's that they are not the same thing as student outcomes. It's not a measure of what students know or are able to do. And this is the next layer of distinction that you must be able to draw as effective school board members. In our conversation, was it about student outcomes or was it about adult outcomes? So go ahead and take your outcomes column and divide it into two. Of the percentage of time that was focused on outcomes, what percentage of that was student outcomes? Measures of what students know and are able to do. What percentage of that was adult outcomes? Measures of what adults are doing, the results that adults are creating of the system. What percentage of the time that you define as outcomes? If you said zero was put on outcomes, then this math is easy for you. But if you put any non-zero number down for outcomes, now the question is, of the time spent on outcomes, what percentage was student outcomes? What percentage was adult outcomes? What percentage of it was measures of what students know or are able to do versus everything else? Go ahead and write down your percentage of student outcomes versus adult outcomes. I'm hearing some very fun conversations happening at these tables. All right. So if you decided that 10% of your time was focused on outcomes, so you have inputs, outputs, outcomes. If you said that 10% of your time was focused on outcomes, and then that was split 50/50 between student outcomes and adult outcomes, then what percentage of your time was student outcomes? 5%. So you want to do the quick math. And now I'm curious about what percentage of the time at the most recent meeting was focused on student outcomes? Talk to me. What'd you come up with? Zero? What percentage was student outcome? What percentage of our time at the most recent meeting was focused on student outcomes? Who else? Any other non-zero numbers? So, so what percentage you put down for outcomes? On that day is 50. And so you're saying half of that was student outcomes, half of that was adult? So 25%. So you're saying 25% of the meeting was focused on student outcomes? Yeah, we haven't even gotten to the sad part. Yes, we'll, we'll talk about that. So, so you mean, the, the, the quick cheat code here is, how many months out of the year should students be, student outcomes be your priority? I, I would hope. That's what I would want if it was my children in, in school system. But we'll, we'll talk more about that later. Who else? What, what percentage did you have? Yeah? Gotcha. Gotcha. Yeah. All right. Gotcha. So is that 10%? Like, what are you thinking? 10% of the agenda. Any sense of how much of the time? Probably about the same. Got it. Anybody else? What percentage did you get, come up with? Anybody else? All right. Let's add the next layer. Because what the evidence suggests is you begin to really dig into a lot of the research literature. And I'll give you a link to a huge bibliography worth of information that's been investigated around what school boards can do that it can be effective and how they can actually make a difference. And I would encourage you to read the evidence for yourself and come to your own conclusions. If you come to conclusions that are different than mine, please call me and let me know so I can check my own math. But as I interrogate the evidence that's available to us, it's not actually that boards are focused on student outcomes. It is the difference maker. The difference maker is whether or not boards are focused on goals that they've set about student outcomes. What's special about a goal? What's special about a goal? It's something specific that we can strive for. Yeah, it's a direction we need to go. We've planted a, a flag and said, "That's where we're heading." It gives us clarity of that, something that we're moving the organization toward. What's special about a goal? Ah, they, they need to be measurable. Any other characteristics of goals? They need to be attainable. They need to be specific. There's a whole results-focused, time-bound. We often refer to this as smart. That it's not enough to be focused on student outcomes. You actually have to be focused on goals about student outcomes. And the transition there is it, it has to become smart. We have to be clear about what exactly are we measuring? But where are we at today? Where are we, where are we going to be? And by when are we going to be there? So if we say literacy, we talked about literacy. Well, that's, then maybe we talked about a student outcome. But that's not actually the difference maker. What you really want is you want to talk about goals about student outcomes. You want to make sure that it's actually smart that it describes what is it that we want students to know and be able to do? Is it specific, measurable, attainable, results-focused, time-bound? Is it actually challenging the organization and requiring adult behavior change? If we adopt a goal and we can accomplish a goal by doing the same thing this year that we did last year, it actually doesn't meet my definition of a goal. At that point, we're not about lifting up what's possible for children. We're just glorifying adults by running up the score. It actually has to challenge the organization and require adult behavior change, or it's not a goal. And it's not a goal if you have 100 of them. People chuckle at this, but I actually had a phone call once. Board chair, great lady, she calls me up one day. She's like, "AJ, we've heard this. We want to focus on student outcomes. We came up with a set of goals. You know, we're ready to pursue this. We're just trying to figure out how much growth should we expect on any of our given goals." It's like, "All right, well, hit me. How many goals did you all settle on?" She's, "Oh, well, we got it down to 135." And guess how much growth I told her she should be able to expect for her goals? Absolutely none. Absolutely none. And so if it's going to be a goal, if we're actually going to say it's a priority, then we actually have to prioritize. I, I encourage it to be one, two, or maybe three goals. And interestingly enough, if you actually go back and look at it, the idea of priority used to be exclusively singular. Think about that. What is the priority? We, only in more modern times have we decided to expand on it and make a pluralized version. But there actually wasn't a pluralized version initially. It was only priority. What is the priority? Now we say, "What are the priorities?" We're trying to keep more people happy. But if you have more than, have more than about five of these, you're, you're courting danger. The evidence I'd pointed to suggests that boards that adopt between one and three goals are likely to accomplish between one and three goals. And that same evidence suggests that boards that accomplish between four to seven goals, any guess how many of those goals are likely to accomplish? One to two. And for boards that adopt eight to 11 goals, any guess how much, how many they're likely to accomplish? Zero. This is a challenge. Is you actually have to be about setting priorities. You have to be clear about what is this small, narrow set of things that we're going to focus on. And this is not going to make you popular. My coaching to you today is not calibrated for your popularity, and it's definitely not calibrated for your comfort. But it is designed to help you improve what's possible for your students. The example I often give to illustrate this point, I, I live in Houston, Texas. And so I always ask this question. It works out. I think it'll work out here. I think Kansas, good folks. How many folks here drive a truck? All right. You got, no, who currently drive a truck? Currently drive. How many people? Yeah, we got some, all right. Who's, who's got, who drives the biggest truck? That's pretty big. This is pretty big. It, it's hilarious, the frequency with which it's like, you know, somebody's great grandma is like this big and drives this monster of vehicles. He's like, "Yeah, I love this. My grandkids love this truck." All right. So you got, so you got the Silverado. How many miles per gallon does that thing get? 12 to 14? Ah, it's not bad. It's not great. It's not bad. All right. So you've got your truck. You put a gallon of gas in that truck. How far is it going to take you? 12 to 14 miles. Let's, let's just be generous and say 14. All right. So now we've got two of our trucks. We've got two identical trucks. We put, we divide that gallon of gas between the two trucks. How far are those trucks going to go? About seven, seven-ish? Seven-ish? All right. Well, we've got 14 identical trucks, 14 identical trucks. We divide that gallon of gas among these 14 identical trucks. We put that in each of the trucks. How far are those trucks going to go? Probably, might not even start. Why not? Yeah. May not even be enough to initiate ignition. But we'll have 14 pretty trucks. We'll have 14 pretty trucks. They ain't going nowhere. But, but if people ask, "Hey, do you have a truck that I like?" Yes, sir, we do. We got a truck that you like, that one right over there. And she'll ask at church or something more, "Do you have a truck that I like?" Well, yes, ma'am. We got a truck over here for you as well. There's a truck that you like. And everybody gets their shiny truck. The trucks ain't going nowhere, though. It's all a show. This is the board that adopts a whole bunch of goals. Person shows up at the grocery store while you're busy trying to, you know, get some food for your kids, like, "Hey, did you pick a goal that I like?" Well, yes, sir, we did. Vote for me. Then, you know, we're at the Rotary Club. Did you, did you pick a goal? Yes, sir, we got a goal that you like. Vote for me. And this is going to work out really great for me as an adult. The children will suffer while I'm busy being popular. The, the, the coaching that I offer you today is not designed for your popularity and certainly not designed for your comfort. But it is designed for the greatness of your students. That you're going to have to make choices. And in your community, are there only going to be three things that people care about and prioritize, want to prioritize? No! And you will have to make the decision about which things do we actually lean into. And my coaching to you is, pick one, maybe two, maybe three. But definitely don't go beyond four or five. So now the question is, have you adopted goals that are smart? So let's check this out. Show of fingers, how many goals has your board adopted? We've got six, five, six, seven, eight. How many goals has your board adopted? Anybody else? Four, three. All right. Now, of those goals, how many of them are actually goals? And notice the second descriptor. Notice the second bullet. Because why do school systems exist? School systems exist for one reason and one reason only, to improve student outcomes, to cause improvements in what students know or are able to do. If you've adopted a goal and it's not about student outcomes, what I'm suggesting to you is it is not a goal. So we've, we've adopted seven. I think you said seven? Six. And of those six, one of them is actually about what students should know or be able to do. Gotcha. And so what you need to be clear about is school systems only exist to improve student outcomes. And so goals describe what is the next step we're going to take in the direction of why the school system exists. And so what I often see school boards do is, "Oh, yeah, we've adopted five goals. I've got, you know, check them off with me. Tell me if I'm off base here." We've got one that says the facilities will be good, and one that says the finances will be good, and one that says the parents will be happy, and one that says the teachers will be happy, and what's that fifth one? Oh, yeah, and children will do good. And it's usually about that generic. Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. And, and it's, it is frequently that generic. It's not smart. It's not specific, measurable, attainable, results-focused, time-bound. And it's not about what students know or be able to do. And so now the question is, of all the goals that you've adopted, how many of them are actually specific, measurable, attainable, results-focused, and time-bound? And are actually descriptions of what students should know or be able to do? And when you have that goal in mind, if, if the board has adopted one, now you go back and ask yourself the question. What percentage of our time isn't just merely focused on student outcomes? But what percentage of our time was focused on our goals about student outcomes? It's not enough that we had a random conversation about data that day. As did we actually have a conversation that was about one of the goals that we've adopted about student outcomes. And if we haven't adopted a goal that is smart and it's about student outcomes, then the default number on the screen is what? Zero. This is what it means for a board to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes. That it's spending a meaningful amount of its time actually focused on monitoring progress relative to its goals for student outcomes. And what we suggest to you is that the board that wants to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes will spend at least 50% of its time every month of the year monitoring progress toward its goals for student outcomes. Is the board that wants to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes will spend at least 50% of its time each year monitoring progress relative to its goals for student outcomes. This is what we say it means for a board to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes. Based on our conversation, I say with love, but I say in all earnestness, this is not your board. That your board is not yet intensely focused on improving student outcomes. It can be. But there are steps that you'll have to take to get there. First, as your board, you'll have to wrestle with the fact that for the majority of boards across the nation, you're spending the predominant amount of your time, if not all of it, focused on adult inputs. That you have subscribed to the same failed pedagogy of school board governance that we have lived under for 100 years. It has failed our students who are furthest from educational justice. There, and you want to be clear about this. There are students in your school system who, by the grace of God, they already have all the things they need. Whether you do right by them, do wrong by them, they're probably going to be okay. A lot of those kids are probably your kids. But there are kids in your school system who, if we don't fulfill on the promise of public education, that we are the final safety net for that child. That we are the blessing that they require to be able to live a choice-filled life that they want for themselves and we want for them. And if we, if we fail, they will fall and there will be nothing left to catch them. It is those children who are disproportionately harmed by the board's unwillingness to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes. You want to be clear about this. Your failure to be focused on student outcomes does not harm all of your children equally. Your choice not to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes disproportionately harms the children who are the furthest from justice to begin with. The children who are struggling the most already. The children who don't have all of the other resources. Frankly, they don't go home to you being their advocate. Those are the children who are disproportionately harmed when our school systems and when our school boards are not intentionally focused on improving student outcomes. Yeah?
Are you going to give us some ideas, because like, I heard a lady back there that committed fast bridge, and we use fast bridge also, we used to get it reported once a year, I said, how many times has it tested? And they said, uh, I think they said four times a year, I said, can we, at the board meetings, get every fast bridge assessment presented to us? But if we're supposed to spend 50% of that, that's maybe four meetings in the year that we're going to get fast bridge, what other assessment, you know, we've got the state assessment, which is at the end of the year or whatever, we don't get details for another year or two on those results, so what, are they supposed to tell us what all the grade point averages are of every kid or every month, or how do you measure? Because I want to help represent.
Yeah.
What tools can we use?
I am absolutely grateful for and refreshed by this line of inquiry. What it means is that somebody is struggling with and thinking through, what, what do I have to change immediately to cause improvements and outcomes for the students I serve? So the first step is, the board's got to get clear about what are the priorities. The board, the first thing the board, and, and to get clear about this, you should understand what the function of the board is, because we often seem to get that muddled up. So what happens is, school systems only exist to improve student outcomes, but the problem is, school systems get to the size where it just doesn't make sense to have everybody in the community sit around a table deciding everything about the school system every day. And so what happens is, we, somewhere along the way, somebody had this brilliant idea, well, let's find a couple of suckers in the community who will actually show up at these meetings on the rest of our behalf, so the rest of us don't have to show up at these meetings. And this intrepid group of individuals, we now refer to as? The school board. What this tells you, though, is what the actual function of the school board is. The school board exists for one reason and one reason only, to represent the vision and the values of the community. This is the only reason school board is to exist, is we are representatives of the vision of the community and representatives of the values of the community at the board table making decisions about the school system, only because it just doesn't make sense for everybody to be sitting around the table. But that is the function of the school board. And so the first step in understanding the answer to your question is, you've got to understand what is our role? Our job is to represent the vision of the community and the values of the community. To represent the vision and values of the community, the first thing you have to do is actually go out and listen to the community, we can't just surmise what they are, we should actually go out and listen to our community and figure out, what, what is it? What is the community's vision for what students should know and be able to do? And we write down that vision in the form of what we are talking about here, goals. So that's the first step, is you actually have to write down goals that represent the vision of the community of what it wants its students to know and be able to do. I'm recommending you have somewhere between one to three, definitely no more than five goals, that represent the community's vision for what we want our students to know and be able to do. That is step one. If you haven't done that, there isn't another step. The first job of the board is to represent the vision of the community. You also have to represent the values of the community, we'll come back to that, but that's not directly germane to your question, so we'll pause on that for a minute. We're going to stay with the vision of the community. Once the board has listened for the vision of the community and written it down in the form of goals that are smart, then the job of representing the vision of the community transitions to monitoring progress toward the goals. So the first is, we clarify the priorities of the community, because we go out and listen and we write it down, we make it plain, because the people without vision show what? No doubt. And so the first job of the board in representing the vision of the community is, we have to write the vision down and make it plain, we refer to that as goals. Then, once we've clarified the priorities of the community, the next step in the process is to create a system of monitoring, to monitor progress. And what we're talking about now, what your question is about, is monitoring progress. Here's the way, here's the way you want this to work, is imagine your board adopts three goals. And one of those goals, say, is about early literacy, that we, maybe a very common goal that I see boards adopt is, the percentage of third graders who are reading on grade level, this is level three and above, not this level two business, so I want to make, I, I want you to listen to what this man has told you, he, he's not leading you astray. You do not want to tee in on level one or level two, level three minimum. And so the percentage of students who are literate on grade level will increase from, you know, 30% to 70% from this date to that date, because some, something of that nature is a pretty common goal that folks would set. And you'd have to decide what data are we basing that goal on, and so maybe you're going to base it on the state assessment, you don't have to, you could base it on something else. But now you've got your goal. Once the board has clarified the vision of the community, you've clarified the vision, and you've written it in the form of a goal, then your superintendent, that is a student outcome, the goals are based on student outcomes, then the superintendent has to come behind that and identify a set of interim goals. What are output measures that we can look at throughout the year that will tell us, are we likely to accomplish the goal or not? Your superintendent should give you at least, should give you exactly three of those, definitely not more, preferably not fewer. So now you've got the goal, that's a student outcome, you've got three interim goals that are student outputs, and that is your set of data. So you've got these four data sets that you're now using for each particular goal, has the goal itself plus one, two, three interim goals. And what you would do is, you'd divide that up across your calendar and say, okay, so in May, we're going to look at interim goal 1.1, and June, maybe we'll look at interim goal 1.2, and three, we'll look at interim goal 1.3, and July, we'll look at the goal itself, now that we've got some of the data back, and then, you know, in August, and so on and so forth. And so you're not going to look at all of your goals every single month, because what you actually want to do is, you want to do a deep dive into each individual slice of your goal. You want to deeply understand, you have, want to have a really deep understanding of exactly what is working and not working. And, and in fact, if you look on the other side of that document, your handout, at the very bottom of it, there's a link to a guide about effective goal monitoring. And that would give you some much deeper insight than we'll be able to get to today that describes, what does it look like for a goal, for a board to really do effective monitoring of a goal? But because you take these small slices, because the intention is to do a really deep dive, not have a shallow understanding, not just a cursory look at the shiny stuff at the top, but we want to go in deep in what's working, what's not working, in this particular area of our goals. And if it's working, great, how did we get there? How did we arrive at something that's working, and how are we doing more of it? If it's not working, great, we're not going to beat you up over it, but we do want to know, okay, how do we know it's not working? What have we tried in response? What's worked, what hasn't worked? What are we going to do next? What should, as board members, what should we expect in the next budget cycle that's going to change as a result of us recognizing that this isn't working? But you need to have that in-depth conversation about each individual slice of your goals to really get at what is happening for our students, and what adult behavior change, superintendent, will you be marshaling in response to what we now understand? But it takes that depth of discussion, that depth of interrogation into each slice of your goal, to really unearth, what are the adult behavior changes that, that need to happen, and that really empower us as board members, that, yeah, this is going to be uncomfortable. There are going to be some uncomfortable changes coming down the road, but we understand that the genesis of those changes is in this data right here that we dug into more deeply. And when you slice your goals up that way and you spread it out, you've got more than enough data, probably already, to fill up 50% of your time each month over the next 12 months. Now it's just a matter of, how are we designing our time to make that happen? Because your problem won't be, you are thinking that your problem might be, will we have enough data? That won't be your problem. Your problem will be that you are already doing something else with your time. That is the true enemy, is that you are already investing 100% of your time in stuff that isn't this, and figuring out, how are we going to redesign what we're currently doing to fit into only half of the time, so that we free up the other half of the time to actually focus on the thing that matters most? That's the real challenge that you're going to face. And, and this is when, and this is when we come to the realness of this conversation. Am I willing to change my own adult behavior in the boardroom to free up space for focus on student outcomes? And unfortunately, my team and I, we code board meetings, and I've actually provided you with a link to our coding instrument, so you can code your own. Actually, I think I put it on that document. If you just go to effectiveschoolboards.com and click on Resources, there's a time-use evaluation document. It pulls up a spreadsheet, you can do the exact same evaluation that we do for school boards all across the country. And you can see for yourself, how are we spending our time? It'll give you exact percentage, the spreadsheet will do all the calculations, you just have to plug in the numbers that are true from your board meetings, it'll give you exact calculation of how are you spending every single minute of your time in your board meetings? And then the question becomes, am I willing to change what we're currently doing? When we've run that exact analysis on hundreds and hundreds of school board meetings across the nation, what we find is, the average school board across the country is spending significantly less than 5% of its time each month monitoring student performance. For most school boards, it's 0%. It's 0%. They're spending 0% of the time monitoring progress toward their goals for student outcomes. And for many of us in this room, we're part of that 0%. That doesn't tell us where we're going, that just tells us where we are. But schools, if they're about anything, they're about continuous improvement. And so the mission then becomes, not to languish in our current 0%, but, great, so how, how are we going to get to 5% next month? What's it going to take for us to get to 10% next month? What's it going to take for us to get to 25% the month after that? What's it going to take for us to get to 50% the month after that? What is going to be our journey from where we are right now to where we want to be on behalf of the students we serve? That's, that is the answer to your question, is figure out, run the time-use analysis on your board and where we are right now, and then start to figure out, what would it take to take the amount of time we're spending right now and shrink that down to half of the time, so that we can actually spend half of our time focused on what matters most? Because as you've probably figured out, if you spend any amount of time on your school board, all that other stuff, you may have slowly come to the conclusion, this is not, we can, we can perfectly pick whether or not we're doing tacos on Tuesday or on Thursday, and it's not seeming to make a difference in whether my children are learning. We can perfectly pick, is the door in the new expansion on this side of the wall or is it on this side of the wall, but it's not causing my children to be more numerated at the end of the day. We can perfectly analyze, you know, which exact contractor should we use to re-asphalt the junior high parking lot? And at the end of the day, my children still aren't any better at being prepared to, to live a choice-filled life that allows them to take care of themselves and their families in the way that I can take care of mine. But the answer to that doesn't live in all the adult inputs, it lives in the student outcomes. I promised I wanted to share some with you today about what the journey looks like, and we've done that. And then I wanted to open it up for questions and just be with you as you wrestle with, what does it look like for our school system going next? And so for the remainder of our time today, I just want to open up the floor, whatever questions you might have, you've gotten us started off really well, so thank you for that. What's coming up for you? What are you curious about? How can I be supportive of your journey toward improving student outcomes in your school system? Yeah?
I can go, go and watch, you know, what's going to happen. We're having a problem with, um, some of our community and a lot of our teachers understanding exactly what a school board is, and what our job is. And so we get a lot of flack because it's like, we're legal people, because we care so much about students and not enough. So is there any way, I mean, how do we get that message out there? I complained to our superintendent, I don't know how many times, that I'm tired of teachers wanting us to just send their mother's stamp, everything that comes through from, you know, our superintendent and the teach, I mean, I just feel like sometimes we have so much pushback, and I don't, I, I don't know, like, how do you get that message out there? What is actually what we're here to do in the health of student outcomes? You would think that, in the way they talk, talk about us in the community, we are all up for ourselves and our own agenda, but I have to listen to our district, I ran based on my cases there, and they're out, I wanted to see their part about, so I don't look at everyone else.
Yeah, so there are two different parts to this. The first is, how do we get clear about what we're focused on as a board and communicate around that? And the second is, how do we actually make sure that folks in the community have an understanding of that? And so, you know, what is our focus and how do we communicate about that? And, and what do we do to really help the community have an understanding about that? Two different challenges. For the first challenge, how does the community know what the board cares about? Anybody got some ideas about this? How does the community know what the board cares about? Yeah, that's not where the community comes up with its opinions.
Mostly rumors.
Where do those rumors come from? Those rumors sadly have a basis in fact. I'll give you a hint, we've been talking about it for the past hour. How does the community know what the board cares about? What it spends its time on? That's how the community knows what you care about. I was working with the school board, and I don't make up any of my stories, I just watch a lot of school board meetings, and the foolishness emerges all of its own. So as school, it was one of my favorite stories to tell, I'm thinking of the board chair at the Times, her, her face is in my mind's eye right now, she'd be laughing hysterically and kicking me if she was sitting right here. I always change the names to protect the guilty, so I won't tell you who it is, but I could show you the video, and you'd watch it, and you'd be appalled yourself. So I was watching the board meeting that I, for a boy I was coaching, had just entered in a coaching relationship with. And at the end of a 45-minute diatribe, a board member bangs his fist on the dais with these words that are permanently etched into my memory, "I am philosophically opposed to non-yellow buses." Yes, that, that, that was the nature of the 45-minute debate about the color of school buses that culminated, "I am philosophically opposed." I, I didn't even know this was a philosophical position to take, like, I'd taken some, you know, philosophy courses, this bus color had never come up before, this, this is new for me. Forty-five-minute debate in the board meeting. Over the next two weeks, what do you think the superintendent and his team spent time on? They absolutely, they're researching bus colors. They want to be responsive to the leadership of who? The board! And so they researched bus colors, and you know, how much the bus colors, these colors cost, and how much do those colors cost? Now, the, the Teachers Association, they put out a poll, was the poll about student outcomes? What was the poll about? It was about bus colors. The local paper got in the act, the local paper, they had, you know, a story that they put out, was the story about student outcomes? What was the story about? It was absolutely, now, at the next board meeting, at the next board meeting, the superintendent and their team did a full-hour-long presentation, was it about student outcomes? What was it about? It was absolutely about bus colors, and at the end of all that, the board did what? Not a thing. Nothing, absolutely nothing. What's the moral of the story? That is not the moral of this story.
To talk about the pain they're experiencing in student outcomes.
The community knows what you care about because it's what you're talking about.
Because we try to do that, that's what's frustrating for it, we try, well, our superintendent, we try to talk about bus colors.
Well, and, and you want to be clear, let that go. These are not superintendent meetings, these are board meetings. If you want to know who is purely and exclusively responsible for the misallocation of board meeting time, you will never point to a superintendent and get that to stick. These are board meetings, there's board agendas. It's the board who's responsible for how that time is spent, and the board is responsible for whether or not we're spending time monitoring progress toward our goals for student outcomes. It doesn't actually matter what your superintendent wants to do in that regard. If the superintendent wants to talk about bus colors, that's fine, let her have a superintendent meeting, and she can talk to the community about bus colors, I think that's great. I love it when superintendents go out and talk to the community about things that is within their realm of responsibility. But when it's the board meeting, that's on me? I, I, I have a say in all that, the superintendent does not. The superintendent's job is to be responsive to the leadership of the board in the board meetings. And usually that means, many of the board items come directly from the superintendent because they're running the day-to-day operations. But never, ever, ever, ever stand on, we aren't talking about student outcomes in the board meeting because of a superintendent. There's, there's only one reason that we're not talking about student outcomes in the board meeting, and that's because of the board. And the sooner you can hold on to that with both hands, the more quickly you'll be able to get to where you're wanting to go. Because waiting for others to try to, this doesn't say, student outcomes don't change until those other people's behaviors change. There is an unspoken message at the end of this. Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. Starting with who? Starting with me. And so that's the first step, is as a board, you're going to have to get real clear about what are the priorities, and then you're going to have to create a demand on your superintendent, this is what we're going to spend half of our time on. And superintendents, what I find, by and large, they will modify their behavior to follow the leadership of the board. That superintendent who gave the hour-long presentation after we got moving to being focused on student outcomes, guess what he wound up providing presentations on? Because that was the demand placed on him by the board. When the board demanded a conversation about yellow buses, they got it. When they demanded a conversation about student outcomes, they got it. This is not superintendent failure, this is on us and no one else. So that's the first step, is the community believes they understand what you care about because they pay attention to what you spend your because they pay attention to what you spend your time on. And so the more that you can begin to shift that away from a focus on adult outcomes and adult inputs and adult everything else and toward a focus on, what are the goals that we've adopted based on the community's vision? And what are the conversations we're having that spend at least half of our time on that? As that happens, you will begin to see a shift in what your community believes that you're focused on. You'll have new things to argue about, to be sure. Then the things you'll be arguing about are some of the things you've already brought up. Is this the right assessment that we should be looking at? Is that the wrong, is it, there, there will still be arguments, but there'll be the arguments you do want, not the argument you have today. That's the first side of your question. The other side of your question is, how do we, how do we have some meaningful impact on the community? And for this, I did provide you a link on the other side. I recommend getting out of the business of onboarding new, well, new board members. If you're a board member less than a year, raise your hand. Oh man, we got, got a bunch of rookies in the house, excellent. Welcome, welcome to the family of school boards, condolences, all those good things. Welcome, welcome. And so you have probably started to experience an onboarding process. I would invite you as the rookies of the room, let this be the last time that your board onboards new school board members. My coaching for you is this, transition to preboarding. Preboarding beats onboarding. Here's what preboarding looks like. If you actually want to secure a board that is intensely focused on improving student outcomes over time, not just the one time while you're around, but in perpetuity to try to secure that on an ongoing basis, preboarding is required for that, onboarding, I've never seen it get there. So here's what preboarding looks like. The standard that you want to reach is everyone who serves on the board had a full training on what it looks like to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes before they filed to serve on the board. This is, this is the standard I set for preboarding. That everyone who currently serves on the board had a full training on how to be an effective school board member and how to be focused on student outcomes before they ever filed to run for the board. Here's the problem that you're facing. Tell me if this sounds at all familiar. So you've got a guy, he's running, it's always a guy. You got a guy, he's running for the school board. He is super, super, super angry, he's saying, "Vote for me, I'm gonna go fire this coach." "Vote for me, I'm gonna fire the coach." And people are like, "Oh, we're gonna vote for this guy, he's gonna finally get this yahoo out of here, he's gonna fire the coach, it's gonna be great." And so he runs for the school board, and only after he gets elected do you go through the onboarding, at which point you tell him what? He doesn't have that authority! At this, and you have told him accurately that he doesn't have that authority. At this point, there are only two ways that this is going to go. Way number one, he goes back to the people who voted for him. "Hey, you know what? I told you to vote for me because I was gonna fire the coach and I didn't actually do my homework, I didn't pay attention to what the roles and responsibilities of the board member actually are. And now that I've gone through onboarding, I understand that I sold you a bill of goods that I can't deliver on. Now I'm going to be focused on student outcomes instead." That is one way it can go. The other way it could go is, "Hey, look, y'all voted for me to get rid of this yahoo. These horrible board members are blocking me from doing what you elected me to do. You know it's righteous, I know it is, let's figure out how to get them out of office so then we can get rid of this yahoo." Which of those ways is happening in your community? It's always the second one. It's always the second one. The correct response to this is preboarding. I remember when I was on the board at Kansas City, we called it "school board school." So in the three- or six-month period before filing open, we'd start hosting a series of day-long Saturday workshops for anybody in the community who was curious about how school boards worked with the intention of trying to pull in folks, education leaders, parent leaders, community leaders were our three biggest. Neighborhood association leaders, HOA leaders, parent leaders, PTA leaders, education leaders, retired teachers who were leaders in their schools. Those are the people we were really targeting, but it's open to the public. We have this whole training on what effective governance looks like. And I remember I was leading a school board school once, and there's this guy, sorry, it's going to be you. And he raises his, he's like, "Wait a minute! So you're saying if I get on the school board, I can't get rid of the bad teachers who are hurting our children?" And what did I say to him? I said, "That's right, so you, you don't have that authority, that'd be your superintendent." He said, "Then why, then why would I even run for the school board?" And he grabs his stuff and he packs up and he leaves. And I would consider that a victory for children that day. But the victory for children did not come through onboarding. It came through preboarding. Had we allowed him to run for the board with that belief about his job being a focus on adult inputs rather than a focus on student outcomes, then he'd justifiably be angry when after the fact, we explained to him what the job was really about. That he spent all this time telling people something. And in his spirit, he does not want to go back and tell people, "I am not a man of integrity, I did not do my homework. I, I don't know what I'm talking about and I convince you out of vote." No one wants to go and have that conversation. You wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't. And so through our negligence to preboard, we've set him up to harm our children. We did that by not preboarding. This is why I say preboarding is better than onboarding. It also matters what you preboard on. Begin to notice, or the, and you'll see this on the sheet that's linked to the onboarding, the sheet about onboarding versus preboarding that I put on the other side of the document. You'll see that there are actually three tiers of information when you click on that link. You'll see that there are three tiers of information that you'd want to preboard folks on. There's information about student outcomes, there's information about organizational alignment to student outcomes, and then there's all the other stuff. Which things do you think most board members get on-boarded about? Is it about the student outcomes? Is it about creating organizational alignment or is it about the other stuff? It's indefinitely, it's definitely the other stuff. In most states, well, we actually did a study, it's in the book as well, about how many states actually have required training for school boards. The answer is half of them don't. And of, even of the ones that do, only four states in the entire union actually have a requirement the boards have some type of training about student outcomes. And your state ain't one of them. And so what happens is the training that board members receive is often about, "Here are the things that you don't do to break the law, here's how you stay out of jail, here's how you don't wind up wearing an orange outfit from the county." And these are the things that the training's about. And I'm not saying those are bad things. I would love for you not to go to jail, my new board members, so I would love for this to be a non-litigious process for you. But if you do those things perfectly, it has no bearing on whether or not your children will actually learn. And so I consider those kind of tier-three things that new board members do in fact need to know. But is it the main thing they need to know? I would say, no, it's not. I am less concerned about whether or not you do something that makes you look bad than I am about, are you going to do something that harms children? I'm actually less concerned about that. And I know that sounds kind of ruthless, but that's just where I choose to stand. If, if I had, if I could only give you one training, one that would help you protect you and one that would help you protect children, I know which of those trainings I would give you first. But that's not what we do right now. And so consider the onboarding that you received, it probably hasn't been anything about children. It's probably been everything about, okay, here's how you file an information request, and here's where the restrooms are, and here's, you know, how you do that, and here's what you can't do and whatnot, and here's how you, you know, do this and don't do that. And all I'm suggesting is those things aren't going to help you help children, they're going to help you help you. And those are good things for you to know, I want you to know those things. It's just not the most important thing for you to know. And it also matters when you know them. If you know them before you file, it's different than if you know them after you've already been elected. Preboarding is better than onboarding. If you really want to change the long-term conversation in your community about the school board, that doesn't live in onboarding, it lives in preboarding. Because the other great thing about preboarding is when we're onboarding, who's subject to the onboarding? The newly-elected board members. When we're preboarding, who's subject to the preboarding? The entire community. It makes a difference. If we actually want the community to understand what effective school board governance looks like, what it looks like to be intentionally focused on improving student outcomes, we would have to, we would have to teach them that. We wouldn't, shouldn't expect them to automatically know. And so the answer to the second part of your question, how, how do we get the community to understand? Preboarding is the path that I would take for that. What else is on your mind? Yeah? No, so, so absolutely not. I actually, our coaching is that the preboarding should be done by board members. And this sounds weird to folks, but yes. The people who should be responsible for training the community on what effective school board leadership looks like should be the school board members who are not subject to the pending election. So if there's an election coming up, there's seven of us, three of us are on the ballot, four of us are not. The four who are not should be the ones who should be leading the school board school.
No, I get a lot of phone calls, I get a lot of phone calls. So many of them are preface by, "Don't tell my superintendent, the board asked me for this information." Look, right away, I think, "You've got a problem."
We've got, I already got a problem, yeah, no doubt.
And I don't know how many districts would even be allowed, the superintendent, so I have. How many districts would your superintendent allow you to preboard?
Yeah, so this is definitely, this is definitely a board decision to make. But board members, to your point, would have to know that it's a board decision to make. And often boards would have a default position of asking, "Hey, Mr. Superintendent, could you train our community on what it looks like to be a good board member?" And I'm suggesting to you that that's, that that is actually a dereliction of your duty. It's actually not the superintendent's job to tell the community what your job is. It's your job to tell the community what your job is. And your job to tell the community what does effective school board governance look like. That's your job, it's, in fact, you don't want the superintendent doing that because you want them focused on what? Yeah, every additional thing you put on the superintendent's plate that isn't helping improve the quality of instruction that students are experiencing is taking away from the student being focused, superintendent being focused on the quality of instruction that students are experiencing. And so I wouldn't want the superintendent to take on this job. But even if I did, it's not their job to take on. This really belongs to the board. And so you'd have to come up with a cycle. Now, the number-one complaint that I get about this coaching, it's like, "So wait a minute, AJ, are you saying that I should go out and train the people who are going to run against me?" And my response is, "Yes, because it's not about, it's not about you. It's about students. If you care, if your allegiance is to students, then you will do this. If your allegiance is to yourself, then you will not. It's really that simple." If, because if your allegiance is to students, then what do you want the person who beat you in the next election to do? Be focused on improving student outcomes. That is what you want them to do. And the only thing that you can do now that's going to increase the likelihood of that is you train them before they ever file. This is not about you. And so we'll figure out what your allegiance is to. Is your allegiance to self, is your allegiance to students? You don't have to answer the question, I can see what you do and that'll let me know the answer. But this is, this is a challenge, is that, yeah, often boards aren't thinking about, how do we intentionally do this? And so frankly, that document that I've linked to lays it out. First, talk about these things, and if the only thing you can do is talk about this first tier of things about student, then that's all you do. And let that be the preboarding. It would be better that you did that and nothing else than to do the stuff at the bottom of the page, the, all the stuff about legalities and Robert's Rules of Order and all that other stuff. Like, that's necessary, but it's insufficient to actually improve student outcomes. And so have that be last. And if you never get to that in the preboarding, great, that's perfectly fine, then do it after they get elected. But the thing you definitely want to do before anybody gets elected, and you want to have as wide of a conversation with the community as possible, is what does it look like for a board to be focused on student outcomes? That belongs to the board. And the board just has to stand in their, in their moral authority as the people whose job it is to represent the vision and values of the community and do it. And generally speaking, if they want to invite the superintendent to say a few words, I don't see a problem with that. But it shouldn't be the superintendent's preboarding session, it should be the board's preboarding session. Yeah? Last night, last night. You go, "Last night, last night." Well done, welcome, welcome. Last night.
At any rate, I ran, told you, for some of your conversations, and I ran based solely on student outcomes. Based on assessment, the only thing I had available to me that I got from Mr. President was test.
You're, you're running in good circles.
In due, and as soon as I started talking around the community about this and started doing ads and interviews and stuff, the school board since then has spent a fair amount of time trying to counter that. And in fact, we spent 35, 45 minutes from that school board meeting, really going at me on that because I was sitting in the back of the room.
Yeah.
He didn't point at me, but we all knew what was going on.
So this, this is actually fairly normal. So the, the challenge, and so it's worth highlighting, that as a board, you gotta be clear. The board created this mess. This is not, you know, this is not a superintendent's mess, this is a board mess. Because the board that spent 45 minutes talking about the color of the school bus, it, it is completely inauthentic for them to come back later and be mad at the superintendent for not talking about student outcomes. Like, it's completely inauthentic. Because we created that. We've had board meetings that had nothing to do with student outcomes. And then magically, some yahoo's going to come along and say, "Let's talk about student outcomes." But that's not what you've been telling me we should be focused on. This isn't a superintendent mess, this is a board mess. And the, and the good news is that this is a board mess. Because if this was a superintendent mess, what would be the only solution? Yeah, exactly. The good news is, this isn't a superintendent mess, this is a board mess. And the benefit of that is, what's the solution? This is something that is within our authority to control. And so the cha, the challenge you're really running into is it sounds like you have a superintendent who is accustomed to being able to have conversations about adult inputs, and that is satisfactory to the board. And now you're coming along and saying, "Let's have a conversation about student outcomes." And that is not, that is not the existing agreement. He's not the one changing the rules, you are. You are the rogue element here, you are the disruptive element here. And so it's important to recognize that and honor that and have a sense of grace for the people who you're disrupting. It doesn't mean you're not going to disrupt them. Like, you're, you're committed to changing my adult behaviors to be better aligned with improving student outcomes. It's going to cause disruption, I'm committed to that. But I can do that and have grace for the people that I am intentionally disrupting. And so the conversation, I would have it come from that place, it's like, "Look, here's what we've been doing as a board. And as long as I've observed in my community, here's what the board's been focused on." And I've never run before, and I never stood up, I never said anything about it before. So I've just been as complicit with us being where we are today as everybody else is. But now, as I look at the state, as I look what's true for our students, we've, as a board, we've got to be more focused on student outcomes. And that does mean it's going to make some changes for you as a superintendent. I'd recommend you find them some resources, find them, you know, folks that they can talk to in the community, you know, give them some insights about the path. I can connect you with other superintendents who've gone down this path of being intensely focused on student outcomes and will testify on how much more they love the job that they have now than the adult inputs-focused job that they used to have. Because as superintendents, when you get down to it, most of them, they want the same thing we want. They, they want to see great things for kids. And they've come to accept the adult inputs-focused world that we've got, not because that's what they want either, but that's just because that's the world that they've got. And they've come to accept it. But they, they will often absolutely embrace a student outcomes-focused approach to governing if it's actually done and done well, if we actually follow through on it. The biggest fear that most superintendents have and staff in general have around a transition away from being adult inputs-focused to being student outcomes-focused is people love being celebrated for how hard they worked. "Well, but I did all the things, I worked hard, I spent a lot of time on this, and I, and I want to be honored for all the hard work that I put into this." And people want to be honored for that, and an adult inputs-focused world gives you that. "Well, did you do X things on this to-do list? Yes, I did." Excellent, success. And student outcomes is a much harder thing to accomplish. It's a much harder, it is a much higher standard. It's a whole lot scarier to say, "Yeah, I'm going to be accountable to student outcomes," which may or may not change based on what I do, as opposed to being accountable to adult inputs. I can guarantee that I can have this set of books and I can have this, you know, set of buses and I can have this set of facilities. I can guarantee those things. Whether or not that translates into children learning, that's a harder thing. It's, makes sense that somebody would be uncomfortable with transitioning from this, adult inputs-focused world, to this, a student outcomes-focused world. They're not the changing variable, you are. And so I'd have grace for that. But I'd also be clear that we're going to have to make that transition, that that's, this is the direction we're going. And I want you to be a partner in this transition with us. If you're willing to be a partner, let's, let's take this, you know, a step at a time and let's, let's come up with a plan. Let's come up with a timeline, we're not going to try to do this all at once, but let's come up with a timeline. I can email you example timeline of boards that I've worked with. Here's what a timeline looks like. It's probably going to take us about 18 months to get there. Then we're going to make this full transition away from being adult inputs-focused to being student outcomes-focused. Probably going to take us 18 months to get there, it's not going to happen overnight. There's going to be a bunch of hiccups along the way. But here are the milestones that we're going to have to hit, and this is what it's going to look like when we get to the end. And I can give you a sample of what that looks like, and you can modify it for your own purposes and, and go to work. And that there are ways of helping make this transition less harmful, less toxic. The other challenge that you're going to run into, and this is where the, why I left you the document about effective goal monitoring. The other challenge you're going to run into is most adults are only accustomed to to- to toxic conversations about performance. Now, this is a real culture shift that's, that has to take hold in order to make permanent a shift to a student outcomes-focused approach to school systems. Is that you have to, you have to completely get away from having toxic conversations about performance. And so as long as people feel this deep sense of psychological unsafety when it comes to performance conversations, they're always gonna push back on having performance conversations. If we look at this data, and it says, okay, little A.J. didn't learn as much as we want him to learn this week. And the resulting conversation, well, what the hell's wrong with you? How come you didn't get it done? How come little A.J. suffered? What's wrong, you know? You know, the community's gonna be mad. Damn it, they need to know it's not my fault. I'm gonna make sure they know it's your fault. As long as that's the conversation around performance, then don't expect anybody to be super fired up about switching to having 50% of their time having conversations about performance. And that's why you'll see in that document that I gave you about effective goal monitoring, that it can't be about that. It has to be about continuous improvement. That has to be the vision of conversations about performance. It has to be about, okay, this tells us what worked and what didn't work. And we celebrate when we find stuff that didn't work. Got it? All right, well, we know that didn't work, just like Edison figuring out light bulbs. Like, hey, 999 didn't work. All right, we'll try it. Item number 1,000, that didn't work. 1,001, that didn't work. And we slowly iterate, and we get a little bit better, and we get a little bit better, and we get a little bit better. It's continuous improvement. And if you can create a culture of continuous improvement rather than this toxic culture around, these toxic conversations around performance, then you can start to make it safe for people, and they'll stop playing hide the ball with you. Because this is what happens, is when you show somebody some data that they don't like, and they beat you over the head with it, guess what staff stops doing? Showing you data you don't like. And then we start getting cherry-picked data. Oh, well, um, the third kid in the fourth row on the second day scored an A. And, okay, that, how does that help us? It, it doesn't. We, we've cherry-picked the data. But that's a board fail. That's not a superintendent fail. That is a board leadership fail. And so the other part of that is not only do you have to be clear about, we're making this transition and, and create some scaffolding so it feels safe that the transition's being made, you also have to shift to a culture of continuous improvement rather than what I frequently see is just a toxic conversation around performance. And as long as people have that, then people won't ever wanna have conversations around performance. Uh, I thought I saw a hand way over here, one of our rookies. Rookie, yeah, what do you got?
Um, the reason that I put attendance on the spending right now because our school has to have some credit for that, I believe, is the low percentage.
Yeah.
So that is real results, well, not, not known, but one of the major student outcomes.
Yeah, the, the thing, and I hear this often. So the focus has become, how do we improve attendance? Because that's holding back student outcomes. So, and so can we have a goal around attendance? So the first question then, can we have a goal around attendance? The first question that inevitably invites, is third grade attendance a student outcome or an adult outcome? Why do you say adult outcome? Why, why would you not say, it's about third graders? Wouldn't that make it a student outcome? Kansas ain't letting third graders drive. What's wrong with y'all? Yeah. And, and so I wouldn't think of attendance, particularly for elementary students, as a student outcome. So the first thing I'd, my first piece of coaching is, that ain't a goal. If it's not about student outcomes, it's not a goal. And so my first piece of coaching to you is, only have goals about student outcomes. Because here's the problem. You can spend a lot of time, and you can get the attendance up above 90%. That doesn't actually mean that what students know or able to do is gonna improve. And so you've got to be clear about what is the main thing. And there are some things that are very heavily connected to, 'cause I agree with you. Uh, it's really hard for little A.J. to get the instruction if they're not in the classroom. But if the second mission becomes get little A.J. in the classroom, I get worried that the, that the thing that we're focused on is getting little A.J. in the classroom. And there's a bunch of things we could do to get little A.J. in the classroom that aren't actually gonna benefit little A.J. at all. And so the first piece of coaching is, I'd get clear about, what is it, what is the outcome that we actually want? And the, and the student outcome we want is not attendance. That's not the outcome that we want. It's like, food is not the outcome that I want. It's just an input to get me to the outcome, but food, having food is not the outcome that I want. Feeling satiated, feeling full. Having little A.J. in the seat is not the outcome we want. Having little A.J. learning is the outcome that we want. And so the first thing I'd coach is, get clear about what is a student outcome that we're gonna be focused on. And then inside of that, it's absolutely appropriate for the superintendent to say, great, here are the things that we're gonna do to accomplish that, and here are the changes we're gonna make to accomplish that. And something around attendance might in fact be at the top of that list. It might in fact be. But I strongly urge you not to make something that is not a student outcome the focus. Hold the superintendent, we need to improve, maybe it's, you know, fifth grade numeracy. We need all of our fifth graders to have mastered, you know, all of the arithmetic that we think that they need to have. Like, we need to increase that, 'cause that's gonna set our kids up for the jobs of the future. We've gotta have fifth grade arithmetic improved. That's gonna be the, what we build our goal around. Superintendent, what are you gonna do to make that happen? And the superintendent basically, one of the things I gotta do is I gotta improve, I gotta improve attendance. But if the superintendent looks at the current achievement rates for the students who are showing up, and those also aren't where we need to be, then that is the first piece of evidence that just improving attendance ain't gonna get us there. So if your data says, every child who is here on a regular basis is exactly where we want them to be, it's only the kids who aren't here on a regular basis who are behind, then it makes sense that, you know, attendance is the, this huge focus. But if you look at the data, and the students who are attending also aren't where they need to be, that's the first indication that you becoming obsessed with attendance is actually probably going to be more harm for the students who are attending, because now the focus goes away from actually improving the quality of math instruction they're receiving and toward how do we get their other peers who aren't in the seats to show up. That's the, that's the fear that I have for you. And so my first step would be get clear about what is the student outcome we actually want. Hold the superintendent accountable to that. And then accept that the superintendent comes up with whatever strategy that they need to come up with to accomplish that goal. And it may be that their strategy is attendance, but don't get invested in the superintendent's strategy. Do not get invested in superintendent's strategy. Do not evaluate the superintendent based on whether or not they implemented their strategies. Guess what my coaching is on how you should evaluate a superintendent? Did they actually accomplish the goals? Are we actually seeing progress toward the? The, the board exists to represent the vision and values of the community. And so the board should evaluate its superintendent based on the vision and values of the community. Have you made meaningful progress toward the vision and values of the community? We talked about the vision of the community. What we haven't talked about that might actually be helpful to you, though, is what are the values of the community? Because it's not enough that the board is representing the community's vision, what do we want students to know and be able to do. The board also has to be responsible to the community's values. Like, it is our job to listen for, what are the values of our community? And our values are gonna be different than those people down the road's values. And that's okay. We, we aren't gonna run our school system the way those people run their school system. We're gonna run it in a way that's in accordance with our values here in our community. And that is the job of the board, is to represent the values of our community. And if somebody on the other side of the state wants to do it a different way that works for them, good for them. That's how America works. If somebody, if those are the values that work for you and you don't like this, there, there, there's another school system next door. Go there. But here, in this community, these are our values, and this is what we're gonna do here. And if one of those values is around attendance, it's not a student outcome, so it's not gonna be a goal. But it might be a strong part of the community's value around attendance. Then the board would wanna codify that as well. The way that we refer to that in our work is that the, the board represents the vision through what we call goals. We've spent a lot of time talking about that. The board represents the values through what we call guardrails. And the point of the guardrails is to say, here are the non-negotiables that have to be honored. And so maybe, so I'm suggesting to you, attendance definitely wouldn't be a goal. I'd say, figure out what the goal is and stand on that. But you may, after listening to the community, arrive at the conclusion that attendance is a value that is really, really, really present for people, and it's really, really important for them. I, I doubt it, but it, but if you do the listening, that may turn out to be the case. And if that's the case, I'd adopt a guardrail around it. And so what happens is the board adopts one to three goals, no more than five. The board adopts one to three guardrails, no more than five. And that is the basis with which you constantly are monitoring the school system, and that's the basis that you evaluate your superintendent on. And so if you have a goal around fifth grade numeracy, you have a guardrail around attendance, then when it comes time for the superintendent's annual evaluation, it's the metrics based on fifth grade numeracy and attendance that you're evaluating the superintendent on. And that helps create the alignment and focus for the superintendent to know, here are the things that I have to get done in order to be pleasing to the board, because this is what the community's vision and values are.
What did you say about, look at the data about students that are attending?
Yes. In fact, in Texas, we actually modified our accountability system to include this in it, that there is one indicator for continuously enrolled students and one indicator for non-continuously enrolled students. Because one of the things that a bunch of superintendents showed up, I, I used to work at the state agency for a while. And one of the things that superintendents would show up and say, well, is, uh, it's hard for us because we're being held accountable for the performance of children who are brand-new to our system. We should only be held accountable for the performance of students who've been in our system for a while. And so as a state agency, we actually came up with these two different indicators. Continuously enrolled students who've been, you know, with us from kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade. And non-continuously enrolled, the kid who just showed up at fifth grade. And so we track both of those metrics for each school system. Anybody wanna guess what the data has actually told us over time? They're about the same. There's not a, people were trying to suggest to it that there's gonna be this huge gap. And in reality, there, for the most part, there isn't. In most school systems, there, there's not, not any gap or barely a discernible gap between the continuously enrolled and the non-continuously enrolled. What I'm suggesting to you, if you saw this huge gap between the students who are attending regularly and the students who are not attending regularly, then that tells you something. But if you've got a bunch of students who are attending regularly, and they're performing just as poorly as the students who are not attending, that should tell you something else that, in that simply attendance is not sufficient to, to meet your aspirations. But to know that, you'd have to have set a goal about student outcomes first. And so then you say, okay, now we can evaluate, how are the children who are attending doing on our goal about student outcomes versus how are the children who are attending less doing on our goal about student outcomes? And then that can help inform what are some of our strategies going forward.
If you just say that the reason that kids who are there all the time aren't doing any better than the kids who are in and out are because the in-and-out kids will go around the kids' back. You get distracted, you get retarded, so they keep having these kinds of things. They have to wait to be going back to those students. So I, I've not been able to figure out how to get over that hurdle in our discussion.
And so, so the first piece of coaching, so the, the inquiry here is, I've been told that the, the main reason we're having these challenges, we've got kids who are in and out, in and out, in and out. And so then when they show up, we have to put so much attention on them that it takes attention away from everybody, so it holds everybody back. Am I understanding that correctly? Yeah, so first and foremost, this is a reality, that there are children who come in and out. There are children who fall further behind. The larger issue isn't actually that group of children specifically. The larger issue is that remediation is very, very expensive. Is that when little A.J. falls behind, the most effective way of catching little A.J. back up is now I really need to figure out how to double-dose it. I need to make sure little A.J. is getting on-grade level instruction so that they have instruction that's keeping pace with their peers. And I need to get little A.J. sort of on-A.J.-level instruction to where they're at to catch them up. I'm essentially giving them a double dose of instruction. What often happens, and is a tragic failure, this should not be happening anywhere, it's, it's malpractice, is to only give little A.J. instruction at the level they're at. If you never give little A.J. instruction on-grade level, then they will never actually get on-grade level. And so this is the real fundamental problem with having students who are behind, is that it is very costly, very expensive to remediate that. Because essentially, we're having a double dose in order to help them get caught up. That is very, very expensive. If you're trying to do that all embedded in one class, then essentially, you're asking a teacher, okay, go from teaching this grade level in this material to teaching, okay, teach this grade level in this material, but also teach this grade level in this material. And you're probably gonna have a couple of kids who, you know, you look pretty clever, you're probably a few steps ahead. So now we've got this grade level in this material, this one grade level behind, one grade level above. And the more work that we ask a teacher to do, the less effective we cause her to be. And that has nothing to do with her and everything to do with, we're just asking them to do an untenable job. And so the solution to that is, oh, well, how do we avoid doing that? And that's when we bring in other people to push in, to support. All of that gets to be very expensive. So the correct answer is yes. It absolutely is challenging. When you have students who are further and further behind, it is challenging to get them caught up. It's your strategy that you choose for addressing that that will determine what are the knock-on effects for other students. And so it's not automatic that that just means that all the students get held back. The strategy you use for mediation. And so if you have no strategy for mediation, little A.J. just pops back in the class, and there's no additional supports, I suspect that is going to be a net negative, either for little A.J. 'cause they just get ignored as the rest of the class moves on, or for the rest of the students, as, as the teacher is spending more time with little A.J. to get him caught up, but to the detriment of other students. That is one strategy, and this is not the strategy I would recommend. Then you've gotta figure out, okay, so how can we push in supports to meet little A.J. where he's at? Try to get him up while the teacher's moving people? Or what are the different instructional approaches we can take? We've got centers going on, so I've got the students who are, they need to be, they're working together on a project that's on grade level. I've got a group of students over here that I'm working with. And the instructional strategy you use is what determines whether that is the outcome. Not, like, 'cause that is a standard reality. You should expect that every classroom in America, there's gonna be some variance. Not every child's gonna be exactly in the exact same spot. And so you've got to have some way of accounting for that. But it's the instructional strategy you use will determine where, where is the impact? Is the effect, you know, for the student who's behind, is the effect for the rest of the students? Or have we pulled resources from elsewhere so that we can have an additional staff to push in? But all of that, it's just, it's what strategy you pick. And which of those strategies makes the most sense is gonna be dependent on what circumstances for your school system. If it's literally one kid in the classroom, I probably would just have the teacher pull some extra time aside for little A.J. while keeping everybody else moving. But as it becomes an escalating percentage of students in the classroom, that's not gonna work. That you're gonna have to get, provide that teacher more supports. And those supports will have to come from somewhere. And this is where you start making the hard decisions around budgeting. Part of the reason that you have to have goals about student outcomes is you have to be willing to say as a board, and this is where, this is where people lose their way. Is you have to be willing to say that some things are more important than other things. You have to be willing to say, we're gonna stop spending money on this thing, not because it's a bad thing. It's actually a great thing, and it's helping children. But we're gonna stop spending money on this thing because it's more important than we spend money over here. And the people whose children are impacted by where we stopped spending money, are they gonna be happy about that? No, of course they won't be. They're gonna be incredibly angry about that. But this is the nature of decision-making. If you wanted easy decisions, you definitely should not have run for the school board. Like, all the easy decisions are made by staff. And then all the horrible, horrible, horrible decisions get shunted up to the board. This is just the way it works. If you're not comfortable with that, then resign now. But the reality is that the hardest decisions get shunted to the board. And it's gonna be those type of decisions where we're gonna have to take money away from this. I, I'll conclude with this. I know a board in Texas, and I mentioned Texas for a reason, that they set one goal. They set one goal. Their goal was they wanted the percentage of students who graduated high school with a, with an associate's degree to increase, for the time it was less than 10% to over 90%. We want the percentage of students who graduate high school with an assoc- having already earned an associate's degree to increase from less than 10% to over 90% over this period of time. And they said to the superintendent, this is the one goal. Do whatever is necessary, but accomplish this one goal. And so the superintendent did, completely redesigned the school system. If that superintendent was standing here today, he would tell you that the only way it's possible to get to the point where 90% or more of our students are graduating with a associate's degree is we had to redesign our pre-K program, and then redesign our kindergarten and then first. So he did, that's, that's what he did. He redesigned the whole program, top to bottom, specifically with this one idea in mind. And, and about seven years later, they actually got there. For the first time, 90% of their students graduated high school having already earned an associate's degree. Now, I mentioned this was Texas earlier. There's some things he had to let go of. One of the things he did is he dismantled the football team. It, it's ain't just Texas, by the way. This is, this is West Texas. It, it ain't just Texas, by the way, this is, this is West Texas. Yeah, this, this, this is West Abilene, you know, this is, this is West Texas. This is West of Texas. But the board stood with us, and we don't care, we, we will dismantle anything that it takes, if we get this result for our children. Whatever it takes, we're going, we're, we will redirect the resources if this is the result we get for our children. And they stood by that, and seven years later, they got there. The first year, they got just over 90 percent of their students graduate high school with an associate's degree, and the next year is 92 percent, and then the next year, but they, they had, I think, three, I think it was four years that they were above 90 percent, and then the pandemic hit, and I haven't checked in on their data since then, I'm certain it cratered as a result of that. But they made hard choices, that gave rise to what was possible for improving student outcomes. This is the, actually the nature of your inquiry, is that as you have an escalating percentage of your students who are further and further behind, the solution is going to be that you're going to have to make hard decisions about where are we going to allocate our, our finite resources. And those decisions aren't going to come down to, we found a bunch of money that was being misappropriated, it's not going to come down to, these people have been stealing money. It's going to be, here's this money that we've been deploying that's made a difference for 10 kids, and it's made a huge difference for them, and their families rely on that difference, and we're going to take that money away, and we're going to apply it over here, because it's going to make a difference for 100 kids. And that's going to be cold comfort to these 10 families. And that's the nature of the work that you're called to do. And the way that you'll know whether you should migrate that money or not, will live in the goals that you've adopted. And the coaching is, that you will, you will sacrifice the things that you have to sacrifice in order to get the results that your community intends. This is why it's critical that you have to start, before you make any changes, you have to start with listening to the community, to capture the community's vision and values, you have to write them down and make a complaint and say, the, these goals are what we're going to sacrifice everything else to accomplish, these guardrails are what we are not going to allow to happen in the process of that, but anything that isn't covered by the goals and the guardrails, anything that isn't covered by the community's vision and values, is up for grabs. And if you're willing to be that radical about it, then you, then you'll position yourselves to be able to make the types of changes necessary to improve student outcomes. Student outcomes don't change, until adult behavior's changed. Yeah.
Can I just ask a question on what you're talking about with strategy?
Yeah.
It's not our job to do the strategies, that's the superintendent's job. So when you're talking about the strategy not working, do you point them out, or do we just continue saying this always and being met? What are you going to change? What kind of, I'm, I've been an educator for 35 years, can I bring in ideas for strategy? Or, is that not my role as a board member? I knew, I'm like the last night, so I'm just curious.
Welcome to the clubhouse, happy to have you. This is an important question, and what the question really gets down to its core is around organizational alignment. Because we have a limited number of resources, and every time we spend any dollars or any energy that's not aligned with the direction we're going, it decreases the likelihood that we'll get where we want to be. And so we want as much alignment as possible, because that means we'll be able to do more benefit for more students. Less alignment, it's kind of like if we're in a canoe, and half of the people are paddling this direction, and half of the people are paddling this direction, we're probably not going to get to the destination that any of the people on either side of the canoe intend. And so alignment matters. At the heart of your question is actually around alignment, and what does it take to best create organizational alignment? The best thing that you'll be able to do as a board to create organizational alignment is first get clear about what's the vision and values of the community, and write them down. We refer to this as goals and guardrails. And then, once you write them down, create a system of monitoring progress toward them, where you're spending half of your time every month, without fail, monitoring progress toward the goals and guardrails. The superintendent's job then is to come up with, how will I accomplish this? And the crucible for whether or not my how is working, lives in the monitoring. So we'll see, month by month, do we see that we seem to be moving, does the data telling us we're moving in the direction that's more aligned with our goals and guardrails, or less aligned? If it's more aligned, then great, what's working, if it's less aligned, great, what's not working, and what are you going to do about it? Your question then comes in at this point, as a 35-year educator, I've got specific ideas about what might work, is this the time where I inject them? In monitoring, I'd say absolutely no. So monitoring, the intention of monitoring, isn't to figure out what board members know. Guess what it is to figure out? What the superintendent knows. The purpose of monitoring isn't to figure out what my ideas are and what I know, it's to figure out what the superintendent's ideas and the superintendent knows. And if the superintendent doesn't have ideas, that is meaningful information to you as a board member. And so, outside of the context of monitoring, if you have a regular one-on-one with the superintendent, you've got, hey, you know, we did this at my school when I was principal, you know, here's some, that, great, I say have that conversation. But the, in the, in the board meeting, when we're having that monitoring conversation, one of the things you'll see in that document about, document about effective board goal monitoring, is do not offer advice. And the problem is, my brothers recently just finished 20 in the Corps, finished as a full Colonel, which basically means, he's gone through a ridiculous amount of leadership training. And one of the things he said he's distilled from all of his leadership training in the Corps, is this one idea that resonates constantly, advice from above is indistinguishable from a command. Advice from above is indistinguishable from a command. And so if, in the context of monitoring, I say, hey, have you thought about implementing XYZ curriculum? Invariably what will happen is, superintendent will, okay, well, yeah, we could, we could implement XYZ curriculum, and we've just failed the intention of monitoring, for several reasons. One, we now have no idea if the superintendent was thinking about curricular improvements or not, we don't know that, we just know that now the superintendent is trying to agree with their supervisor. We don't know if your idea is any better than the superintendent's idea, but we know the superintendent is going to chase that, just like the superintendent would chase a yellow bus, because they think that this is what's going to be pleasing to the board. And when that curriculum implementation fails, guess who the superintendent's going to blame? Well, they blame the person who came up with the idea, the board member. And so this is why, in the context of monitoring, you don't want to be in an advice-giving mode. So if you're having great conversations outside of monitoring, and your one-on-ones, about, you know, here's ideas I have, I say do that, that's fabulous. In the context of monitoring, when you're in that board meeting, that is not the time or place. Because what you will do is, you will, you will create a yellow bus scenario, and, and you will come away not having any insight to, does my superintendent actually have ideas for how to improve student outcomes? And so it's not an advice-giving space, the monitoring, that 50 percent of your board meeting that spent monitoring progress, that is not an advice-giving space, because in that context, advice will be indistinguishable from a command, and then you will create knock-on effects that are not what you intended. So is there a place to honor your experience? Absolutely. But, in the boardroom, and particularly during the monitoring session in the boardroom, is definitely not, and it will have unintended consequences that you will not enjoy.
Very clear.
Boss lady, what time is it?
I've got one minute.
Look at that. I want to, I want to end with a word of gratitude. This is hard work, the things that I've suggested to you, I don't pretend that they're easy. And I certainly don't pretend that they're comfortable. In fact, I, I preface it by saying that you should expect that the coaching that I offer you is going to be uncomfortable, it's, it's not designed for your comfort, but it is designed to support you in being great on behalf of the students you serve. And so for the folks who choose to stand in this, whether it's, you know, in your first few moments in office, for those of you who've been through this for a while, who like me have gone home from board meetings and literally, and literally balled, terrified about, did I make the right call? Is the thing that I think is making a difference for children, is it really going to matter? I can't tell you how many nights were my eight years on the board, and most of which is a board chair, I'd go home and I would literally cry myself to sleep. I'm not normally that emotive, but it is a hard pull, you know, on a righteous man's spirit of, am I doing the thing that makes, that makes the most sense for an entire community's children? And if you don't feel it like I felt it, then this might not be the place for you. This is hard work. It's hard work, I, I don't pretend it's not. And the coaching I have isn't designed to make it any easier. But it is designed to help you improve outcomes for the students and your community. Thank you for your time.
Michael Lindell, your assistant. AJ, one more question. Can you ask one more?
Of course, sir.
My question to AJ would be, everybody did heard that, unmotivated, I wish every school board member in the state of Kansas was sitting in this room today, and now these guys are going to go home, what did they say for their board? I heard AJ craved, and here's what we got to do.
The first thing I'd recommend do, is actually what I mentioned earlier, is I'd start with a time-use analysis. My sense is what helps boards get their head in the game first, is when they see something tangible that they can do. Like, people need some, like, what is the thing that I can do tomorrow, the tangible step I can take? And for my money, the time-use analysis helps with that. So I can look at, I can tell you exactly what percentage of our time was actually focused on student outcomes. And when confronted with that, that is often enough energy for people to be like, okay, I want to hear more about this. Like, I'm, maybe I'm not bought in yet, but I definitely want to hear more, now that I'm looking at it in black and white, and it's clear that what we're doing isn't focused on student outcomes, even though that was my intention. And so that's often the place I like to start first, which is why that's essentially where we started today. We did kind of a quasi-time-use analysis, to give people a sense of, okay, here's where I want to be for my students, and I thought I was pretty close to that, and now I'm realizing that I'm actually way over here. And I think as folks get a hold of that in a tangible way, then that opens up the conversation. The next thing you do, it looks like there's a few extra copies of the book, I'd snatch up some extra copies, and share it with a colleague, and maybe just do a little book study. And if you're, if you're absolutely, you know, hard up for cash, email me, I'll email you, you know, some PDFs of the, the relevant section in there, you can just have like a, a conversation with your colleagues around. It's like, okay, folks, this is where we want to be, we thought that we were pretty close, now we're looking at this, we're actually pretty far, are we willing to take the steps to get closer? And so I think this is work that most boards can do on their own, if there's that one person on the board who's willing to be the champion and willing to push it. But I think the easiest way to ease into that is to start with some type of time-use evaluation, and like I said, there's a free spreadsheet on the website, you can grab that, you can conduct it, and I'm happy to answer questions.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much, sir.